Good afternoon, everyone. I want to call this meeting to order. I'd like to call this meeting a regular meeting, an agenda item number two, invocation and pledge of allegiance. I'm going to -- the chair will recognize Mr. Pettis. Mr. Pettis?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being here. Leading us in the invocation this afternoon is Pastor Obed Jimenez. And we all can please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come to you in Jesus' name, thanking you for all of your blessings. It is an honor to be -- to come to you on behalf of our city, behalf of our city leaders. We thank you once again, like I said, for your blessings. You have blessed our community, you have blessed our city through adversity, through all different things, Father. Thank you for bringing us through, and we are stronger, we are better. Thank you for all of your blessings. We ask that you continue to bless this community, that your favor may be upon us. Bless this city, bless the leaders, Father. I pray that you give us wisdom, give them wisdom to lead, to do your will. I pray, Lord, that your will may be done in our city, that everything that we do and plan and think be in accordance with your will. We ask all these things in the name of your Son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, our Father, Lord in heaven. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation. Amen.
I would like to lead just to the flag of the United States of America, as to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as one. Pastor Jimenez, you want to come forward so we can take a picture with you?
Right here, three, two, one. All right, thank you.
I would like to call a regular meeting, an agenda item number three. Mr. Colasos, Marshall, Marshall Colasos?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Whereas the city of Mission, Texas, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Mission, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas homes, whereas home fires kill 2,735 people in the United States in 2016, according to the National Fire Protection Association, the Fire Department of the United States responds to 352,000 home fires, and whereas the majority of U.S. fire deaths, four out of five occur at homes each year, and whereas the fire death rate per thousand home fires reported in the U.S. Fire Department were 10 percent higher, were 10 percent higher in 2016 than in 1980, and whereas Mission first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape," practice and plan your escape, effectively served to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim October 6th and 12th, through the 12th, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week 2019. Throughout this city, I urge all the people of Mission to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergencies, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Mission Fire Department during Fire Prevention Week 2019, proclaiming on this 23rd day of September 2019.
Thank you, Marshall. We have a motion on the floor and a second. In this opening for further discussion, any discussion by any of the council persons, no discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The proclamation has been approved, Mr. Marshall, and you want to come over here so you can receive it.
Thank you.
Chief Sanchez, you want to join us?
I'm inviting you over to Chief. Do you want to move this chair, Charlie?
Oh, yes, please. Can we look over here? Right here, three, two, one. One more, three, two, one. Big smile. There we go. Yeah.
Now I will call a regular meeting, an agenda item number four, proclamation, also Ms. Carrillo.
Mayor Council, at this time, I'd like to introduce Michelle Pellet, who's here with us today. She's the Program Director for Heroes in Disguise, and she's here to accept the proclamation.
Can you step up to the podium, please? Thank you for the record and for the public also.
The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas pediatric cancer is the leading cause of death by disease for children under the age of 15, whereas every day, 43 children are diagnosed with cancer, 12 percent of whom do not survive after being diagnosed; whereas childhood cancer affects all ethnic, gender, and socioeconomic groups; whereas more than 40,000 children undergo treatment for cancer each year; whereas 60 percent of children who survive cancer suffer late effects such as infertility, heart failure, and secondary cancers; whereas the average cost of a stay in the hospital for a child with cancer is $40,000 per stay, a portion of which may be covered by insurance, although this extraordinary cost is only a portion of the financial burden faced by families with a child diagnosed with cancer; whereas 30 percent of children diagnosed with cancer do not have an oncologist available within 60 miles of their home residence; whereas families with a child battling cancer face other out-of-pocket, non-medical expenses, including gas, hotels, meals, childcare, and relocation expenses, in addition to potentially losing a secondary income should a parent stop working to provide full-time care during their child's cancer treatment; whereas throughout the month of October, Texans are encouraged to be a hero in disguise by supporting families battling pediatric cancer and working to ease the burdens that they face, while encouraging friends, family, and others to do the same. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Heroes in Disguise Month in the City of Mission, and call upon all Mission residents to join forces and lend their strength to the Texas families battling pediatric cancer, proclaiming on this 23rd day of September 2019.
I have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Proclamation has been approved. Ma'am, you want to say something before we take a picture?
I just want to say thank you. Heroes for Children has given out over $6.2 million in the last 15 years. We've assisted over 6,200 families. I pulled statistics just for the Mission Harlingen area, and we've assisted 167 families and given out over $117,000 in assistance to families in your communities that have a child battling cancer. So we cover the entire state of Texas, and thank you.
Thank you for that. For all the children of Texas, and especially for the ones of the city of Mission.
Thank you. Three, two, one. Three, two, one, one more. One last one. Smile.
Now I'll call on regular meeting, agenda item number five, Ms. Mungia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we'd like to present to you our Employee of the Month winner for July, I'm sorry, July 2019. July's winner was Charlie Longoria. Charlie, if you can join me up here, please.
Who's going to take the picture?
I asked the department to send me a picture of Charlie, and it took a while to find one because he's usually on the other side of the camera, but we were able to get one, so.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay. His write-up states, "Charlie is simply the employee that everyone else should model themselves after. Every day, he comes into work with a smile and a positive attitude. He never complains about this workload, though he is required to cover nearly every event in the City of Mission, and that often includes weekends and nights. He is creative, helpful, resourceful, and is always willing to go the extra mile to help his coworkers or in the department within the city. He is dependable, flexible, and is an exceptional team player. There is no single incident that made Charlie shine. He shines on a daily basis with his excellent attitude, strong work ethic, and his proactive approach to his job. Charlie is dependable and takes initiative. He always goes above and beyond with his video and audio projects, and he takes constructive criticism gracefully. Charlie works well under pressure and never misses a deadline. He is a problem solver and not a complainer. This department is better because he is a part of it. He is a tremendous asset, and the City of Mission is lucky to have him." So congratulations, Charlie. I'd also like to ask his director, Roxanne, why don't you please come up and say a few words?
I think I said it all already. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm so thrilled that Charlie was named Employee of the Month because I honestly can't think of anybody that is more deserving. As I did in my write-up, he comes in every single day with a smile and a can-do positive attitude. He is an exceptional employee. Everyone should be like Charlie. That's going to be our motto in Mission. He's always willing to help out our city departments, and he does work crazy hours to get it done for us. And coming from a television background, I don't know if you guys know this, but this man is self-taught. He taught himself how to shoot and edit. That's extraordinary and just amazing, and of course, he did because he's awesome. So he's a hidden gem here in the City of Mission. We are so lucky to have him in our community, and I'm even luckier to have him in my department, and you can never leave me. So congratulations. Now I have to take the picture.
Do you know how?
I don't.
Let Roland take it.
Charlie, Charlie, Charlie.
Let him figure it out.
Let him figure it out.
Here you go, Charlie.
You look a little confused.
Do you do miracles with a camera for us?
Thank you.
Ready? One, two, three. Let's take another one. There you go.
Thank you.
Now I'll call a regular meeting, agenda item number six, Ms. Enriquez.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council. So last Friday, we wrapped up a great board retreat. Now we're fully, we're fully staffed, or we have 15 board members. We worked diligently to revamp our mission and vision statement for the chamber, so now we very clearly are very inclusive of our tourism efforts and our mission and vision. So we're so excited about that. So all the activities, of course, will be aligned with our mission and vision for this upcoming year. Our program of work will be proposed at the October meeting, so we do have an October, which marks the first board meeting for the chamber, and at that time, the final program of work will be presented, as well as a selection of our officers from our board. So we're excited about that. So that's in the works. Next, this Wednesday, September 25th, at 10:00 a.m., we do have an active shooter training, and we still have spots available that we will be putting on in collaboration with our Mission PD. And next Thursday, Texas Regional Bank, one of our investors of the chamber, they are sponsoring a local business networking event, and it's going to be October 3rd at 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, so we invite everyone. They will also be recognized city as the All-America City there, so we're excited to highlight that. And in our tourism office, we are facilitating the collaboration between the local citrus growers and our hotels to purposely implement grapefruits in their hotels. So whether that is a welcome grapefruit to our visitors that come, or they have grapefruit-infused water available in the lobby, and we feel it's going to really impact and help give a good experience to our visitors or hotels when they know that they're in the City of Mission, it's the home of the grapefruit. And we are also working on leisure tourism packages specifically for burning and for historical sites right now. So that's what we have growing right now in the City of Mission and the chamber.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to the chamber CEO? No questions, thank you, Ms. Enriquez.
Thank you, excuse me.
Regular meeting, agenda item number seven, departmental reports. Council, this is your chance to address any of the department heads based on the reports that were filed. I want to approve the reports as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the departmental report as presented. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Call regular meeting, agenda item number eight, Ms. Carrillo, citizens' participation.
I just, there we have Ms. Tina Lewis. She's here to speak on item 3.7.
Ms. Lewis, name and address for the record, please.
Tina Lewis, 1615 Vintage Lane, Mission. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Tina Lewis, and I am a board member of the Advisory Committee called Mission Possible. This advisory committee is always searching for new and better ways to improve our shelter. In the search, we came upon Best Friends Sanctuary, and were offered a free assessment of our shelter, and that is why I'm here today speaking on behalf of item 3.7. For those of you who are not familiar with Best Friends Sanctuary, they are the leaders of the No Kill Movement. In fact, their goal is to make all shelters in the United States no-kill by 2025. Due to their extensive knowledge and running their own 20,000-acre no-kill sanctuary for over 30 years, they are now helping other shelters in need across the United States. Right now, they are in Edinburgh and Harlingen and have offered to help us out as well. If we accept this generous offer, they will be with us for two days, November 7th and 8th, and during those two days, they will be watching our day-to-day operation. After the visit, they will give us a suggestion report, and with that report, we can decide whether we want to make some of the changes or all of the changes. It's up to us. However, whatever we decide to do, they will help us out, and if funding is needed, they have the ability to help us find grant money also. Mission Possible's vote to proceed with this offer was unanimous, and we hope that your vote today will be unanimous too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Carrillo, next person.
Yes, ma'am, we have Ms. Irma Flores Lopez.
Okay, Ms. Flores Lopez, name and address for the, for the record, and the audience will know that you have a maximum of three minutes.
I think you have my name and address memorized. Irma Flores, 1201 Carroll. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here to talk to you about the hot topic, AAA funding for the Mission Housing Authority. I'm a new board member, have been serving since January, and the concern has come out that maybe the housing authority won't have AAA funding for meals for the elderly. Well, in the words of Gomer Pyle, surprise, surprise, surprise. I met with the executive director today for the first time. He opened the doors to Carnegie Square myself since January, that's eight months ago, and we asked him point-blank, is there funding, is there operational funding from the housing authority, just like housing authorities nationwide have? And he said, yes, we have operational funding to help with the elderly programs, but we want to keep using AAA funding. I personally think it's wrong. How can you take advantage of another funding source when you have your own money to help the elderly? I just wanted to bring that to your attention because it was brought up two weeks ago. It's been in the newspaper, it's been in the news, but I believe in doing my homework. You have to fact-check, F-A-C-T, as facts, before making an assumption. Again, we met with the director. My concern is a bill or a law may be our dear elderly, telling them this and that without giving them the correct answers. I invite you to visit Palm Claws and the High Lines right across Waterbury here in Mission. Go inside, go to the second floor. As soon as you step into the second floor, it smells like mildew, and there's wet ceiling panels soaking. Third floor, same thing. The stairwell is older than I knew, it'll be 58 in two weeks. If they care about the dear elderly, fix things for them. Don't just depend on funding to fund employees when you have the money to fund. And I've been waiting for your calls. Two weeks ago, I gave you my number, and I'll repeat it again. 789-9429. I did receive one call from Jessica O'Toole, I'm an open book, I'm here at almost every city council meeting. If you have any questions, I will be more than glad to answer them. But then again, I wanted to remind you, the director told us today, there is housing authority funding for those positions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else, Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, sir, we have Chief Regent Rodriguez.
Yes. Chief, name and address for the record, please.
Robert Dominguez, 1200 East State, Mission, Texas. My house is across the street. Mayor and City Council, I just want to say thank you for your support for Joaquines Periqueta on Saturday. It's great to see you there, supporting him, and obviously, the countless law enforcement officers from federal, state, county, and local agencies. I think I've gotten a number of phone calls regarding, obviously, what we did for him on Saturday. I'm pretty sure you all saw, I don't know if you saw, but the Post from CNN, and I got a call today from the Washington Post as well. So it's kind of gone viral for us nationwide, and again, I just wanted to thank you for being there, supporting this Periqueta family and our family at the Mission Police Department. Thank you.
Yes.
It was an honor to be there.
Hold on.
We have Mr. Javier Pena.
I just want to say that it was, that I'm sure on behalf of the City Council, it was an honor to be there.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have Mr. Javier Pena.
Mr. Pena, name and address for the record, sir.
Javier Pena, 203 South 10th Avenue, and I'm here to speak on executive, one of the items on executive session.
Okay, sir.
6.1A. Now, this is a small town, so rumors run rampant. One of the concerns, and I have several clients that have asked me to come speak to the City Council about this measure that's being proposed, the temporary sign ban, rumors are that it's to remove certain billboards and political signs. So I'm here to address you on behalf of my clients and other citizens of Weslaco. Content-based speech restrictions are frowned upon by the United States Constitution. It's a violation of the First Amendment. So if there is an attempt to ban political signs, it's going to face legal scrutiny and will likely be struck down. I'm sure your very well-qualified legal counsel will inform the City Council of that. The other issue that we have is, the rumor being put forth on this measure is that it is specifically targeted at certain billboards for certain political candidates. So that brings in not just the First Amendment issue with the Constitution, but Article 1, Section 10 of the United States Constitution, which prohibits any governmental entity from passing any law or ordinance that would invalidate or impact any existing contract. And as I'm sure all of you are aware, billboards, in order to put a sign on a billboard, you have to sign a contract with the billboard company. So questions we have is, why would the City Council plan, if this is, these rumors are true, to pass a ban, a temporary ban, on political speech billboards which would be violating two provisions of the United States Constitution, face legal scrutiny, and likely be struck down? Why would this City Council ask the citizens to pay their taxpayer money to fight a battle that any lawyer, any first-year law student will tell you will likely fail in the courts? Now, we know that this measure was passed or was put on the agenda item by Councilwoman Ochoa, so that raises even more questions because we know she's openly supporting one of the political candidates of a very hotly contested campaign right now. So the question is, are you being paid by that political campaign? Were you asked to put this measure on the agenda today so that you can benefit one candidate over the other candidate? And if that's true, why would you ask the City Council to vote on an illegal measure to help one political candidate that you support and spend the citizens' money on that measure? Why do you want to send the city into another lawsuit and drag the city's name through the mud again just to help someone that you're politically supporting? I think the citizens and my clients have a lot of questions, and we'd like answers as to why this measure is being put on the agenda and why this council, if it passes it, thinks it's important to spend taxpayer money to block political speech. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's all.
That's all? Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to call the regular meeting, agenda item, public hearings, 1.0, 1.1A. Mr. Acevedo?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for preliminary and final plat approval for a replat of lots 3, Block 21 of the Simron Country Club, Phase 1, Section 4, being a .11 acre tract of land, more or less, in part consisting of all of Lot 3 of Block 21, in the re-subdivision of plat of Simron Country Club, Phase 1. It is in the PUD at the Simron Country Club area. The developer is Maria Lugo de Bernal, and the engineer is Salinas Engineering and Associates. On September 11, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider the preliminary and final plat approval for a replat of Lot 3 of Block 21, Simron Country Club, Phase 1, Section 4. The proposed replat is located near the southeast corner of Sabine Court and Rio Grande Drive along the south side of Sabine Court. Simron Country Club, Phase 1, Section 4 subdivision consists of several blocks, making up a total of 133 residential lots. One of the residential lots, or Lot 3 in this case, will be replatted via this new plat which was attached in your, in your agenda, and there is a 35-foot strip of golf course reserve, as can be seen there, south of Lot Number 3, or Lot 1, as it's being called now, and And what the applicant is doing is that they're incorporating this golf course reserve into one lot. They are in the process of building a house on that particular lot, and although the house is going to be built on what's the old, larger portion of the lot, they would still like this 35-foot strip to be incorporated onto their lot. A similar re-subdivision was done for Lot Four, in which the council approved the replat of that particular lot, and they're seeking the same treatment here tonight. The utilities, the streets, the storm drainage are all existing and part of the original subdivision. The board unanimously recommended approval as per staff's recommendation. Staff and city manager recommending approval, subject to complying with all typical format findings. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Acevedo. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the preliminary and final plat approval? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the preliminary and final plat approval? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the preliminary and final plat approval? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm going to close this public hearing, and I'm going to open it for any other city council persons who would like to address any comments or any questions. No comments, no questions. I will entertain a motion to approve or disapprove.
I'm going to approve based on the recommendation of the planning and zoning and staff.
We have a motion in a second to approve the 1.1A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 1.1A is approved.
Thank you.
Moving to next agenda, 2.0, the consent agenda. I would like to remind all the council members that if there is any particular agenda item that's on the consent agenda that you would like to draw out, so we will not vote, just let me know the agenda number. So if not, I will entertain a motion to approve 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.4, 2.5, Resolution Number 1614, 2.6, Resolution Number 1615, and 2.7, Resolution Number 1616, 2.8 also.
I'm here for approval as presented, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda item is approved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any final questions or pullouts?
I just want to ask, is that an increase on item 2.8, country renewal with Taylor Technologies? Or it stays the same?
Why don't we do this, sir? Because the agenda is full. What we're going to do is we're going to pull out 2.0 out of the consent agenda item. It's the chair so decides, and so we can cast a vote on the other ones, and I'll call the agenda item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I will call the agenda item, sir. You can come to address the podium, Agenda Item 2.8.
Agenda Item 2.8, the renewal on Taylor Technologies for the online payment software for utility billing payments. It's my understanding that the price remains the same. It's just a renewal of the license that we currently have for the system.
Is this a first-year renewal, or?
No, we renew on a yearly basis. It's a system that we've had for years, that we utilize for the utility billing payment.
And you're satisfied with the system?
Yes, sir, we have. We are entertaining and looking at other systems that we could potentially tap into for efficiency purposes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Want to put in a motion?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve 2.8. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
2.8 is approved, sir. 3.0 approval and authorization, 3.1, Mr. Acevedo?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 3.1 is a homestead exemption variance for a .88 acre tract of land out of Lot 246, John H. Sherry Subdivision. The property is zoned R3, and the applicant is Javier Rios. On September 11, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public meeting to consider this homestead exemption variance. This tract is located along the west side of Taylor Road between Summer Breeze and East 20th Street. Back on November 10 of 2014, the city council passed the homestead exemption ordinance, which allows for homesteads to be granted various waivers of the city's subdivision requirements, if and only if the lot is being proposed for the applicant's single-family home. In this case, Mr. Rios has shown interest in this particular lot that was zoned R3 multifamily. He desires a lot to be used for a single-family home, which is allowed under the R3 code. As far as water and sewer, all those services are existing along Taylor Road. There's water and sewer connections already in the area. There's a 6-inch water line and an 8-inch sewer line that can provide services to the applicant. As far as streets, the applicant did inform me that through the widening of Taylor Road, he has already dedicated the necessary right-of-way for the future widening of Taylor Road. So that's not something that we need to request at this time because he's already granted it. As far as drainage, storm drainage will be accomplished by the regrading of the bar ditches and other requirements that they must comply with the model subdivision rules, dedicate water rights, and the street lights and the park fees are also waived via the homestead exemption variance. The board unanimously recommended approval, subject to compliance with all homestead variance requirements. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. Item 3.1 is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Acevedo. Do I hear a motion to approve or disapprove 3.1?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Anybody has any questions?
Is there any way we could request that it be zoned to R1? I know that it's allowable, but since the use is actually going to be R1, could we do that now, or does it have to come to a rezone?
Does it have to, but I could, if it's part of the conditions of approval, I can have the applicant.
You will need to amend the motion.
Okay, can we do that?
Well, let's amend the motion to change R3 to R1.
Yes.
Do I hear a second to amend that motion?
A second.
We have a second to amend the motion of R3 to R1. So the first thing that we have to do is vote for the zoning portion of it. So any questions on the R3 to R1 by any of the council persons? No questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So that amendment has been approved. Now we need the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.1 has been approved with the condition that R3 be rezoned to R1.
Okay.
The process should be.
Thank you, Mayor.
3.2 ordinance, it would be passed, Ordinance 4835, adopting the tax rate. Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
I guess, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 3.2 is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Mission, Texas, levying and ad valorem taxes for the use and support of the municipal government of the city of Mission for the fiscal year 2019-2020, providing for appropriating each levy for specific purposes, providing when taxes shall become due and when shall, same shall become delinquent if not paid, and providing for exemptions for the elderly and for the disabled. The tax rate for the fiscal year 2019-2020 is 0.5212 per hundred property value. In addition to establishing the tax rate, this ordinance provides a $10,000 exemption for the elderly and $10,000 exemption for the disabled. The city will also continue the tax rates established in 2005 for the elderly and disabled, ensuring that the total amount of ad valorem taxes paid will not increase. The interest and sinking rate, INS, is 0.0909, and the maintenance of operation, the MNO, is 0.4303, with a total tax rate of 0.5212. Staff recommendation is approval of the ordinance.
We are going to have to take a hand vote, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve, Ordinance 4835, as presented by Mr. Perez. And this, any final discussions? I will call for a vote, and I'll start with.
Do we need Jessica to be here?
Huh?
Do we need Jessica to be here?
We have a quorum.
Does she have to vote?
No, we have a quorum.
Yeah, we have a quorum, so.
Okay.
Okay. We'll start with you, Mr. Vela. In favor, against, please indicate by showing your voice vote and your hand, please.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. So motion passes, four to zero. And let the records indicate that Ms. Ochoa is out of her chair. Okay? Yeah. Did you get that, Ms. Carrillo, that she's abstaining, not abstaining? Okay. Okay. Moving right along, 3.3, Mr. Perez?
Yes, item 3.3 is approval of the publicity and tourism agreement with the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. The approval of publicity and tourism agreement with the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce Inc. for fiscal year 2019-2020. These are funds that are received from hotel multi-occupancy tax under VATS Tax Code, Section 351.101, to use hotel occupancy tax funds for attracting and promoting tourism and the convention and hotel industry. Attached is a copy of the 2019-2020 agreement to be effective October 1, 2019, through September 30, 2020, in the amount of $370,000. The budget is included for your review. Staff recommendation is approval of the publicity and tourism agreement as presented.
Do I entertain?
I'm going to approve.
Do I entertain a motion, first and second? And this is for final discussion by any of the council persons? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.3 is approved. And I call for 3.4, Ms. Carrillo.
Mayor and Council, item 3.4 is the board appointment for Juvenile Justice Delinquency and Prevention Board, and this is to replace Dr. Austin, who was recently appointed to the Spear Memorial Library Board. Mayor's recommendation is to appoint Ms. Beth Barnes, and this would be term to expire December 31 of 2021.
Ms. Barnes, will you please stand up so the public will know who the person is? Just in case they don't know Ms. Barnes. I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second to appoint Ms. Barnes in the Juvenile Justice Advisory Board. And this is open for final discussion by any of the council persons?
You're going to have so much fun.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Barnes, we're going to ask you to come up to the podium and address your board appointment, and then we're going to take a picture. And then after that, we're going to assign you, after that, we assign you to the police chief since the Juvenile Justice Advisory Board.
Just want to thank you for the appointment, Mayor, and hope I do a good job for you.
You will.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry.
Congratulations, Ms. Barnes, now it's official.
I know you were doing a good job.
Thank you.
One last one. Three, two, one, big smile.
Okay, good luck.
Again, good luck.
All right.
I'd like to call 3.5, Mr. Perez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Alteration to execute six-year renewal services disposal agreement with solid waste. This is our six-year renewal of the seven-year contract. The estimated cost is $950,000. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Vela. This is open for discussion by any of the council persons? No questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.5 is approved. Mr. Perez, 3.6 is on the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. 3.6, approval of new sanitation rates to be charged to the city of Mission by Republic Services for solid waste accounts. A 73.57% increase for 2020. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve, 3.6. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Second has been called for. And this is open for discussion by any of the council persons? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
3.7, Mr. Barrera.
Mayor and Council.
Yes, sir.
Show us, on this item, Mayor, we don't, there was a request to have it tableled due to some state veterinary director contact that said whether or not the best friend was liable. That doesn't need to be, since there was someone who spoke about the comment. If you guys want to hear what Mr. Barrera says, discuss amongst yourselves, or you certainly can't. But there was a request to have it tabled.
And we can always ask for legal advice, right, sir?
And who requested it to be tabled?
Sorry?
Who was?
Who requested? From Austin, he's a chief veterinary director. He was going down.
Is he under the Texas Department of?
Yes, he's in the Texas Department of Health, yes, sir.
Okay, let's.
And we'll be having a meeting with him on October the 3rd here, with city manager and management, and the health director, and so forth. And then we'll proceed with what we need to do.
Let me put it in a motion first, and then we'll open it for discussion.
Okay.
And then we'll let you present, sir, okay?
No problem.
Do I hear a motion to?
I'm going to table, sir.
We have a motion to table. Do I hear a second?
Can we discuss it? Did we table it?
I'm not going to call the vote, yet.
You can ask questions, Mr. Barrera.
Yes, but I need for somebody to second the table.
Mayor, I would like to have some type of workshop so that we can get more information about why it's needed.
Let me have a second. Now we can open it for discussion. Okay. Go ahead, continue to discuss.
I would like the staff's recommendation on what they think of this program coming in, or something.
Well, let me hear Mr. Barrera, and then Mr. Barrera.
And that's the reason why we're going to get with Dr. Tyler, because he's the one that accredited our shelter. So basically, we'll see what we can do, what will be benefit to us if we do this or not. And that's the reason why we're getting his guidance. Because we're accredited by the state, and we've been accredited for the past 15 years.
Mr. Perez, are you aware of the situation, and you received the phone call?
Not directly from Dr. Taylor, but we did have the discussion with Mr. Barrera regarding what the role that Dr. Taylor plays in the shelter. But it was requested to have a meeting with the best friends to get further detail.
Okay.
And the best friends we do here is the members seven and eight, but we use cable, it'll be well within the state.
Okay. Mr. Plata? Ms. Garza? Any?
No.
Mr. Vela?
No.
And this is open for a vote?
No.
All those in favor say aye to table?
Aye. Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those against, same sign. The motion, 3.7, is tabled, sir.
Thank you, sir.
3.8, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I come before you, seeking approval or amendment to work authorization number eight with Melton and Hunt Inc. related to the city of Mission wastewater treatment plant improvement project for engineering and construction administrative services. Amendment to work authorization number eight entails eight additional improvements items, mainly for the existing, constructed in 2006, nine million gallon per day wastewater treatment plant section. That includes BFD motor drives, new metal pavilion, increment on reclaimed water baffles, upgrade on new V bank, open channels, upgrade on existing stainless steel rotors, jockey pump for the reclaimed water, rehabilitation of the South Deacon Clarifier mixing well, and TCQ Type 1 municipal authorization permit. And of course, we have a more descriptive scope of the service that is highlighted on the attachment A of work authorization. The total cost of this amendment
It doesn't affect, and I know are legal, but maybe purchasing, the 25% of the actual bid, it, how does, how does it calculate, because since it's our eighth authorization of eighth amendment? You know, what's, what's the total of?
This is actually for professional services design, the designs of the specifications and the plans, so this is, this would be the initial phase, it's not construction.
And if I may, Mayor, to answer the question, work authorization number eight, it just, it specifies that it's contract number eight, not necessarily an amendment eight. That's what it specifies.
Yes, it, oh, okay, to clarify, it's amendment number one to work authorization number eight, Mayor.
Okay.
Yes.
So hence, it wouldn't be considered a change order.
So next time when we do an agenda item, please include the, the, the concept?
Yes, sir.
Of professional qualification services, so it can be clear to the public, you know, because, you know, I had some phone calls that, that, you know, that the total, they asked me what's the total of it, you know, and, and that's why I'm asking, because I don't wanna go over any other laws that, you know, as far as that is concerned.
You are definitely in compliance.
That's all I wanted to hear, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions besides mine?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Three point nine, Mr. Salinas, ordinance 4836, am I correct, Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir, item three point nine is the approval of ordinance 4826 of the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas, Amendment Section 114 through 222, style drought contingency and water conservation plan of its code of ordinances to incorporate the changes satisfying the revised requirement of Chapter 288 of Title 30 of the Texas Administrative Code. The Texas Commission on Environmental Quality and TCQ mandates that municipal water supplies to meet all minimum requirements under TCQ rules Title 30, Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 288, is specific, a revision to the drought contingency and water conservation plan every five years. The revision includes updates in current data such as current water plant capacities, public outreach, drought stage updates, and set water loss goals. Quadrant of revision will remain the same, adhering in Business 83, where the criteria for initiation of drought response stage is triggered. The basic goal of the plan is to ensure an uninterrupted supply of available water into an amount sufficient to satisfy essential human needs. Staff and City Manager merely recommend approval of ordinance 4826.
I move for approval.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, just wanna make you, make a little comment that, once this is approved and so forth, and put it in an agenda item for the Rock Committee, so the Rock Committee can know what the drought contingency and water conversation, conservation plan is.
Yes, sir.
Okay, as far as that is concerned. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, three point nine is approved, Mr. Salinas, ordinance 4836 is approved. Three point 10, ordinance 4837.
Yes, sir, Mayor, City Council members, item three point 10, it's approval of ordinance 4837 of the City of Mission, of the City Council, of the City of Mission, Texas, to regulate and reduce pollution that enters into the surface waters of the State of Texas and the waters of the United States, from discharge into city's municipal separate stone sewer system by providing for the detection and elimination of illicit connections to a stone water system, and requiring erosion control and pollution prevention at construction sites, and to establish penalties and effective date satisfying requirements of Chapter 281.28A of Title 30 of the Texas Administrative Code. Pursuant to the Clean Water Act and Texas Pollution Discharge Elimination System General Permit TXR 040,000, the City of Mission is required to develop, implement, and enforce a stone water management program designed to reduce the discharge of pollutant into the city's streets, girders, ditches, stone drains, to the surface water of the state and the waters of the United States, and to the maximum extent practicable. Such requirement will be implemented to the City of Mission code of ordinances entitled Pollution Prevention in Stone Water. Mayor, Staff, and City Manager recommend approval of ordinance 4837.
I move for approval.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, we have a second to approve, ordinance 4837. Any final discussions by any of the council persons? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, three point 10, our ordinance 4837 is approved. Calling for three point 11, Ms. Mungia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, item three point 11 is the authorization to award contract for pre-employment screening services. Beds are solicited for pre-employment screenings, which include drug screening, medical, physical, and preplacement for potential new hires. Staff receiving open for bid responses. Lima's drug testing has been selected as the most advantageous to the city, and Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second, and this is open for discussion, anybody in the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, three 11 is approved, Ms. Mungia, three 12, ordinance 4838.
Thank you. Item three point 12, staff is proposing revisions to the drug and alcohol use policy and the insurance policy. The drug and alcohol use policy is being revised to follow updated laws and regulations regarding the use of legal CBD products, and the insurance policy revisions include the addition of the retiree plan and changes of city-paid coverage for retirees with 25 years of service or more, from 24 months to 12 months. These changes will be effective 10/1/2019, and Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Ordinance 4838.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4838, and this is open for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, you will add it to the personnel file that's approved, ordinance 4838.
Yes, thank you.
And we published the, the personnel policy manual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three point 13, Mr. Benson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I have before you item 3.13, which is the authorization to purchase pool chemicals for the two city swimming pools, splash pad, and for the, and for the fountain at Mission Events Center via state-approved contract number 53317. This is for, this will be from the Aquatic Commercial Solutions, Inc., via state-approved buyboard contract number 5317, at an annual amount of $45,000. Included in the purchase of said chemicals are the acid feeder systems and the integrated electronic systems which is used to monitor and control the pH level and the chlorine concentrations. These two systems are provided at no additional charge. Staff and City Manager recommend the authorization of said purchase.
I move for approval.
We have, we have a motion and a second to approve, 3.13, open it for discussion by any of the council persons. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, 3.13, Mr. Benson is approved.
Thank you.
Three point 14, Bill Maris.
Item 3.14, authorization to purchase tires from Houser Buying Tires Southwest via Smart Buy Contract 553-18 via Tire Centers for City Fleet and Sanitation Department. Sanitation and Fleet Department are seeking authorization to purchase via Techsmiles 553-18 for our entire fleet. Via Techsmiles 553-18 Cooperative Contract.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, open it for discussion by any of the council persons. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, 3.14 is approved, Mr. Bill Maris.
I do wanna, if I may, they are here, the representatives from, they are local who own City of Mission, their location is at 910 Business Park Drive, they have their warehouse there, and they welcome everyone to go, go by there and visit their location. Thank you.
Can you, can you introduce them to us?
Sure.
So, you all wanna come to the podium so the public could see you, see, see your face, and be able to recognize you when you, when you're spending money in our restaurants?
Your name?
Rick Lopez, Hesselbean Tire Southwest, been with the company 15 years.
Thank you, and?
My name is David Sontoy, I'm a resident of Mission, I help him with his accounts down here.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Three point 15, Mr. Bill Maris.
Item 3.15, authorization to solicit bids for the lease of copiers for the following departments, CDBG, MDC, Museum, Boys and Girls Club, Golf Sanitation, and our Facilities and Fleet Department. We are seeking authorization to solicit for bids.
So moved.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any questions by any of the council persons? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, 3.15 is authorized, and you can solicit a bid, Mr. Maris.
Thank you.
Three point 16, Avila?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I come before you seeking authorization to purchase automotive parts, fluids, maintenance equipment, supplies for Napa Auto Parts, NJPA Contract 062916-GPC, O'Reilly's Auto Parts by Contract 551-17, and AutoZone by Contract R170201, for Fleet Department fiscal year 219 through 220 for repairs on all city vehicles and special equipment. Staff and City Manager recommend approval. This is my greenhouse shop, sir. It's a total of $75,000, it's 25, 25, 25 for each of our local O'Reilly's, Napa, and AutoZone.
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Move for approval is presented.
We have a motion and a second, anybody from the council want to ask any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, 3.16 is approved, Mr. Avila, and 3.17, Ms. Vella.
Item 3.17 is the authorization to accept a donation of 10 Ellipsis 10-inch tablets. These tablets were received through the Boys and Girls Club of America Conference at a drawing. The estimated value of each tablet is $150. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any questions by any of the council persons? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, 3.16 is approved, Mr. Avila, and 3.17, Ms. Vella.
Thank you, sir.
Item 3.17 is the authorization to accept a donation of 10 Ellipsis 10-inch tablets. These tablets were received through the Boys and Girls Club of America Conference at a drawing. The estimated value of each tablet is $150. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any questions by any of the council persons? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, 3.17 is approved, Ms. Vella, 3.18.
I'm gonna wait for the.
Yes, you have the floor, ma'am. We'll wait.
There we go, it's coming up. Item 3.18 is the approval of the July 2019 financial statements. The adjusted beginning fund balance was $17,496,578, and total revenues for the month were $7,709,380, with total expenditures of $9,538,009, leaving an ending adjusted fund balance of $15,667,949. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve 3.18. Any discussion, any questions by the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, 3.18, 3.18 is approved, Ms. Vella, 3.19.
Item 3.19 is the approval of the tax collection report for the month of August 2019. The 2018 total adjusted tax levy was $20,406,95.19, and the amount of collections as of August 31st, 2019 is $19,703,14.82, which represents 96.57% of the total tax levy. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Good afternoon, Mr. Vella, and any final questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, 3.19, Ms. Vella is approved, 3.20.
Item 3.20 is the approval of the attached budget amendments from the MDC and MDA funds. We have revenues of $275,000 as a transfer in from MDA to MDC, and expenditures in MDA of the same amount, $275,000, for allocations for economic and development transactions. MDC Board approved these amendments on August 20th of 2019. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve 3.20, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, any questions by any of the council, or any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, 3.20 is approved, Ms. Vella.
Thank you.
3.21, Chief Dominguez.
Mayor of City Council, item 3.21 is authorization to accept a grant from the Office of the Governor's Criminal Justice Division for the Mission Police Department Nightbrush Grant Project. The grant will allow the Mission Police Department the opportunity to purchase a new software for the purpose of upgrading and changing our current crime reporting system from a crime index reporting system to the national incident-based reporting system. There is no cash match required from the City of Mission. The total amount of the grant award is $338,757.24. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
And staff would be you too, right? You recommend approval, right?
Yes, sir. That amount, yes.
You worked hard enough for it, chief.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
We have a motion, do I hear a second? We have a second, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, 3.20, 3.21 is approved, chief, and 3.22, Resolution Number 1617.
Yes, Mayor of City Council, approval of Resolution 1617, authorizing the dedication of the 12 and the 1300 block of East 8th Street as Corporal Speedy Drive in remembrance of Corporal Jose Luis "Speedy" Quetta, Jr. Staff and City Manager recommend approval of this item.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any questions by any of the council persons? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, 3.22, Resolution 16.17 is approved, chief, and calling for 3.23, Chief Dominguez.
Item 3.23 is approval of professional services agreement with Hollis, Redledge, and Associates. Consultant is to provide services regarding state and federal relations relating to the City of Mission and economic development activities, including but not limited to researching, developing, writing, obtaining, and administering grants on behalf of the City of Mission Police and Fire Departments. The term of the agreement is from October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020, in the amount of $4,500 per month. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this is open for discussion by any of the council persons. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, 3.23, Chief Dominguez is approved.
Thank you, Mayor.
City Council.
3.24, Terras.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, I come before you to present item 3.24, authorization to execute first one-year renewal option via state-approved contract for cleaning and sanitation supplies for the city facilities via state-approved buyboard contract number Current contract is with Golf Coles Paper Company via state-approved buyboard contract 569-18. First one-year renewal option at 0% increase, estimated cost is $53,000. Staff and City Manager recommends approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion by any of the council persons? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, 3.24, Mr. Terras is approved, and 3.25 is on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item three point twenty-five, authorization to execute second one-year renewal option via state-approved contract for air conditioning filters services for the city facilities buildings. Second one-year renewal option at zero percent increase. The current contract is with Joe Fly, J.F., Infiltration via state-approved by board contract five fifty-two dash seventeen. The annual cost of thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is anybody, any of the council persons have any questions? There be no questions. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Three twenty-five is approved, Mr. Teraz.
Thank you, Mayor.
And three point twenty-six with Resolution Sixteen Eighteen. Ms. Vela.
Item three point twenty-six is approval of Resolution Sixteen Eighteen, amending Resolution Number Fifteen Ninety-seven pertaining to the adoption and implementation of a Widi-Lot Amnesty Program. This resolution was approved by council on April 23rd, 2019, with the program commencing on April 24th and scheduled to end on September 30th, 2019, at the end of this month. Staff is requesting an amendment to extend the program through the end of the year, December 31st, 2019. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion.
Second.
I do have a question. Is December 31st, 2019 good for you, or would you need more time?
We have seen an increase in revenue, about nine percent. It's been working. A lot of people have been coming in, so we've just asked to give them...
But do you wanna be, after, like, 2020, you don't wanna...
We could. I mean, it would be up to, if you wanna do a full year, it would run from April 30th to April thirty, or, yeah, April 24th was when it started, so...
Bring it back in case, you know, you start, I mean, as the floodgate opens, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, dude. Can we have an amendment to it and change the date to September 30th, 2020?
Well, the full year would be April 23rd, 2020.
April 23rd, 2020. Do you all wanna do that? Or do you wanna have him come back? It's up to you.
I don't mind you coming back. I mean, I think that more we know about the numbers, the better.
Okay.
Okay. That's okay? Okay, then I'll drop the idea.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution Sixteen Eighteen is approved, Ms. Vela.
Thank you.
Three point twenty-seven, Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Item three point two-seven is authorized me to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Patronato de Nuevo León. This is a nonprofit organization, and they're requesting to enter into an MOU with the city, and it's to offer free and volunteering basis services to address multiple types of emergencies such as fires, natural disasters, chemical spill incidents, car traffic accidents, confined spaces and water rescues, and other incidents in the state of Nuevo León, Mexico. The request is being made to invite the city to become a fellow partner with the objective to be mutually benefited with knowledge, techniques, and equipment, which should result in better expertise and personal development to address emergencies. This item, we're seeking council direction on this item.
I need more information on this, exactly what all this entails.
Did, was the, their proposal attached to the packet?
Yes.
It is. It's a, they're an organization in Nuevo León that raises funds and equipment and is first of two other cities in the state. They're a nonprofit.
But was there, the written document added to the packet to...
Well, that was a biography of your, they did that.
The only other one that I can say is Mr. Plata. Mr. Plata was here when the presentation was made. Mr. Plata, you have any words to say?
Actually, they say it's a nonprofit. The only thing that I have to say is that we had signed several agreements, but it's been true cities, non to a non-for-profit, so that's the only difference that...
It's not a sister city.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Yes. This is not a sister city approach.
But would this, I guess I'm just a little confused. Would this involve any of our staff going to help in any of their disasters?
The intent is to share training, to share training, to share equipment, to share response also. You know, it is a state-level organization. They have approximately, I think if you, I think if you read your packet, it had, I think, seventeen fire stations?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Seventeen fire stations, and they have over two hundred personnel that they have. It's either paid or volunteer. They have a combination fire departments, and they serve seventeen different cities, not only our sister cities, but also other cities that are there, to include the city of Monterrey. You know, they service their fire rescue for the city of Monterrey also. So, it's a, you know, the proposal for us is to be able to establish communications to the state of Nuevo León and to establish with the city of Monterrey also, and that's the intent. That's why it's a memorandum of understanding, you know, so...
Any donation in the future that was taken into account?
Any what now?
Any donation?
If we do any donation or exchange of equipment, you know, the order has to be approved by the council, so this is to, the memorandum of understanding is to authorize, because it wants to expand also. The training program wants to expand to what is called an international fire academy for, and they wanna get South Texas College also involved in that. I know Hollis Redledge is in the, in the audience, you know, and his dad, when I served under him, worked real close with this nonprofit to the point that we were sharing instructors. We were sharing instructors, because there's a lot of instructors from Mexico that are from Monterrey that are very, very, because they also are, I haven't been to Monterrey in a while, but from what I heard in the conversation, that they have high rises now in downtown Monterrey, and this is, and this is a future of us, that if we start expanding and growing as a city, we're gonna begin to grow up, not only on the north, you know, we're gonna grow up. So, to me, if you all would authorize me to be able to, and not only me, but Mr. Plata, because he's also a sister city, authorize me to continue the program, you know, and be able to, to be able to get you more information other than what is there. I do have some pictures that I can share with you of their celebration, and they have, in Mexico, they have Dia de Nuevo. I don't think that that exists in the United States where there is one day to honor the firefighters only, you know, as far as that is concerned. So, I'm asking a pool, as a member of Mission, to be able to negotiate with them and be able to work with them to establish the International Fire Academy at the associate degree level. Do I hear a motion, or...
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
I'm a no.
I'm voting in favor of it, so. Four to one for the record. Approve three point twenty-seven. Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, sir.
Three point twenty-eight, Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Item three point two-eight is authorization to approve and execute real estate conveyance and donation agreement. This is between the city of Mission, ML Roads LTD, and Amigos del Valle, and this is subsequent to approval by Amigos del Valle. They'll be having a meeting tomorrow. Roads LTD is donating numerous acres to Amigos del Valle for the construction of affordable housing development and ancillary community buildings. The request has been made for the city of Mission to construct sewer lines for the said development. Like I said, Amigos del Valle will be meeting tomorrow to discuss this item, and we're requesting council direction on this item.
Three point two-eight is on the floor. Do I hear? Any comments?
Going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion second. The only question that I have, Ms. Carrillo, is when they're seeking the infrastructure, is it at the expense of the city?
It's gonna be funded, it's federal, not by TERS.
So it is at the expense of the city? Okay.
But they will reimburse us?
No.
If the funding for Amigos del Valle does not go through, then the owner of the land who's going to the property get committed to building the port of housing on the same line as the private, so, yeah, we can't, we can't build a sewer line for a private division, so it's gotta be a port of housing.
But it is funded by the city, the infrastructure? By the TERS?
Yes, sir.
By the TERS?
Yes, that's correct.
Which, the TERS is a section of the city?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any projected amount or more or less, any...
The sewer line?
Dollar amount a week?
Usually it's, what is it? Eleven dollars, eleven dollars a linear foot, somewhere around there?
It's almost a million, and we have, I have to build it, and I think, I mean, it's a few years to get the funding, so we don't just say anything wrong, but if it does, we have a Plan B.
Yes. And we also have Plan C that I haven't talked to you about, Mr. Martinez, also.
And the other one will have to build his port of housing, just like the new design.
And we also have Plan C, just in case, that I haven't discussed it with you yet, also. So there's, there's room for that.
Yes, there are, oh, there's like a...
Yes. Yes, there's other affordable housing that's coming in and working together with Mission Housing Authority and Casa de Corta, nonprofits into, you know, and our veterans, our veterans are VA also, because I think, I think this project is veteran-oriented, am I correct?
Targeted to...
Veteran-oriented, so...
It's right next door, too.
Yeah. Well, no, I'm talking about the housing is veteran-oriented for veterans, just for the record. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And Ms. Carrillo is abstaining because she is on the Amigos del Valle board. So, four, zero, and one to stay. For the record. Three point nine, Mr. Azaral.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item three point twenty-nine is the final plat approval of Eduardo's 23 subdivision. This is a nine point eight, six-six acre tract of land out of tract one, block two, Citrus Groves number one. This is in our rural ETJ. The developers Diana Isaguirre and the engineers Isaguirre Engineering Group LLC. The subdivision is located on La Homa Road, approximately six thousand, six hundred feet north of Mile Three Road, so it puts it at approximately four and a quarter mile along the east side of La Homa Road. Thirty-eight single-family residential lots, all exceeding the minimum area requirements are being proposed or have been constructed via this development, and the water CCN does belong to Shoreland Water Supply Corporation, and the developer has installed filling stations for fire protection. The city of Mission will provide sewer, and the developer will be extending, or has extended an eight-inch sewer line to a manhole that's located along La Homa Road. Drainage for the subdivision is via detention and through the use of a thirty-two-inch line located within the proposed streets that will flow into the existing West Main Drain number three. It is also noted that the developer has widened the West Main Drain number three to provide an additional cubic feet of detention. She, the capacity was increased by twenty-three thousand, eight hundred cubic feet. Staff and City Manager are recommending approval. Item three point two-nine is now before you.
I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Three point twenty-nine, and this is open up for discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point twenty-nine. Four point oh, we have no unfinished business, and move to five point oh, routine matters. Five point one, Mr. City Managers, comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Couple of comments. I would like to invite the community to attend the second Glow Gold Walk in support of childhood cancer, which will be held September 25th at Benworth Park from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. I did attend the September, the previous one that they, that they hosted. It was a very nice event, a very family-oriented and very supportive event, and so encourage everyone to attend, the community as well. It, also, I would like to congratulate David Flores, our Deputy City Manager. After thirty-seven and a half years of service, he is now retired from the Army. Retirement ceremony took place this past weekend in Virginia, so congratulations.
Mr. Flores, we're gonna, the chair's gonna call you to the podium so you can say a few, a few comments, you know? We're calling you to the podium.
Mayor, Council...
First of all, I wanna thank you for the service that you provided our United States of America and the service that you're doing with the city of Mission.
I appreciate that. Unexpected, thank you very much. Lot of stories. It's been a long journey. I can't believe it's been thirty-seven years, more than half my life, and now, here with the great city of Mission, I look forward to taking all my lessons learned and applying them here and helping us do things great for our communities, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor's comment, I just wanna let the public know that this weekend we had a, an activity at the Mission Event Center that had over five thousand people that came into, into the city of Mission from all over, all over the valley and Mexico, and it was very, very well organized, very well achieved. Chief, thank you for the safety plan that you had. It was very well visible, you know? I just wanted to take, you know, and basically to have over five thousand people come on one event in one day is, it means that our, that Mission is attracting people to come and, and the main thing is spend their money in Mission, you know, one way or another, so just, I just wanted to make that point. And as we work together with the international commercial of chambers, you know, that also will attract businesses and also investors into, into the city of Mission, you know, as far as that is concerned, so. And the other thing that I just wanna say also is thank you for the opportunity for, and be able to work with the state of Nuevo León. You know, in fact, this afternoon I had another individual that wanted to make the contact to, for us to continue working with the state of Nuevo León, and keep in mind that we are working on, on opening another international bridge, you know, and that international bridge has railroad component, and if we have a railroad component, the Kansas City Railroad is, has a corporate main point in Monterrey, you know, and these individuals, of course, do their, all their fire inspection and their training and so forth for the Kansas City, so they know they have the contact and that we're gonna have open contact to be able to, to talk to the Kansas City Railroad as far as that is concerned. Second, and second to all, I wanna let everybody know also that the mayor and I, McKellen, is starting a, what is called a conversational lunch program every fifteen days, so we're meeting one day in Mission and one day in McKellen, you know, every fifteen days, just to, to share ideas, and not only share ideas, but because we are neighbors to each other that, you know, any issues that cross over Taylor Road, and not only that, as we grow to, as we grow north, we have to grow north, McKellen is growing north also, right alongside of us, so we're working on letting the public know that we're talking and having those dialogues of the extraterritorial jurisdiction and our sewer and water CCN, you know, as far as that is concerned, and basically, it looks like the possibility that we won't be making a trip. I know the railroad chairman is, is here, and I've already put him on standby that we may be taking a trip to the Kansas City head, corporate headquarters in Kansas City, Missouri, on either the late October or early November, you know, to continue so we can be able to work on allowing our presidential permit of 2021 get expired, you know, and we're gonna be applying for an extension of that. That's enough from me, and then I'll start with City Council, Mr. Vela.
No comment today.
Ms. Carrillo?
I would like a picture with David Flores, the council.
Good.
No comment. Just take the picture.
I do have a comment. Chief, I reiterate what Norrie said earlier, it was an honor to be at the football game. I commend your staff, whoever got, I know Mr. Javier Lada took a lot of time out of his own personal time, I'm sure, to get all those people together, and other staff, I'm sure it doesn't take just one person. I also wanted to give a special shout-out to our museum director and her staff. I didn't see her here. She did a fabulous event on Thursday. I think that we had great individuals that were honored. I especially loved that Judge Aida Salinas Flores was honored. She has been one of my role models since I was young, and I'm gonna keep it with what she taught me five years ago. She told me to keep it classy up here, and I'm gonna continue that tradition. Thank you all, and God bless everybody.
Good. Okay, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code, Section five five one, point zero zero one.
I'm going to approve after the picture.
We have a motion and a second to, pending the picture. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and we will be back.
I'm going to reconvene, ma'am.
I will entertain a motion to reconvene according to executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code, Section five five one, point zero zero one. I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are reconvening, and I will address six point one, consultation with the attorney